Good evening. We're going to call this regularly scheduled council meeting of February 12th to order. And we're going to begin with an invocation, and Counselor Walter Jones has agreed to give it, so please stand with me, followed by the invocation.
If you'll bow your heads to pray. Thank you for gathering here together. Thank you for our many blessings. Thank you for life itself, our health. Thank you for our friendship and how we serve the City of Homewood together. We thank you for all the work that we do together. I pray for the freedom that we've been given, and I pray for the mayor and all of us who have been given a responsibility to serve the people of Homewood. We thank all the heads of departments within the city. And if you'll give us guidance to provide wisdom to govern and knowing what is right, we ask for all of our many blessings as we approach Lent. We thank you for the sacrifice of your son. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Counselor Jones. Roll call, Ms. Salter, please.
Yes, sir. Mr. Gualphney?
Here.
Mr. Thames?
Here.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Here.
Mr. Wolverton?
Here.
Mr. McCluskey?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Mrs. Smith?
Mr. Wyatt?
Here.
Mrs. Andrews?
Here.
Mr. Wright?
Here.
And Mr. Limbaugh?
Here. We have a quorum. We have no reading of the minutes tonight, so we'll move on to board vacancies. We have multiple appointments tonight, I believe. I'm going to start with Mr. Wyatt.
I'd like to nominate Nick Kleinhans to the Hydra Board? That's the one with the, I know these boards are interchangeable.
Right.
Make sure I'm getting the right one to the Hydra Board, where we have an opening. He was actually on it and then had to come off because we messed up the numbers, so we're appointing him back to it.
Mr. Wyatt, it's actually the Hydra and the CDA.
And the CDA?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
There you go.
Like to nominate him for both.
So we have a motion from Mr. Wyatt, and we have a second from Mr. McCluskey. Any further discussion? If there is none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And that is unanimous. So if you'll let him know, Ms. Salter, we appreciate it. Also, I think, a park board nomination, am I correct?
Yes. After applicants were turned in and two very good candidates and two very good interviews, I'd like to make the motion to appoint Todd Minor for the at-large position of the park board.
All right, we have a motion from Mr. McCluskey. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second.
Second for Ms. Andrews. Assuming no other discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that, too, is unanimous. So we'll let Mr. Minor know as well. Did we have any other openings tonight, or?
Mr. President?
Yes.
I think I did need to open a vacancy tonight. We don't have any other points.
Okay, go ahead, please.
There's a at-large vacancy on Homewood Environmental Commission. I guess you set that closing date for 4:30 on March 12th.
Good. That'll work. Any other?
We have a Hydra IDB at-large that needs to be opened.
Okay. The Hydra IDB opening at-large, we'll open it and close it at the same time that we are the HEC one, okay?
Aye.
That'll work. All right. We have some amendments to the agenda tonight, of course, and under committee referral. 2002-18, request for consideration of committing $1 million from the 2016 bond proceeds for sidewalks requested by myself. This will be referred to Finance. Mr. Jones?
Thank you.
All right. 2102-18, request for signage at Homewood Schools prohibiting cellphone usage in school drop-off zones. Again, requested by myself. This will be referred to the Public Safety Committee. 2202-18, also a committee referral item, request for consideration of a small cell tower at the corner of West Valley and Aspen Drive. Mr. Cobb, I think this is requested by you. Would that be correct?
Yes.
Okay. And this will be assigned to Special Issues. All right, then one other item. This is new business other, 1902-18, request to authorize the mayor to sign a maintenance contract for outdoor warning siren system requested by Melody Salter, our Finance Director and City Clerk. So again, we have three committee referral agenda items and one new business other item. Is there anything else, Mr. Jones?
I would request, if possible, on page 3, 0602-18, if we could drop that, that would make me happy.
06, I'm sorry.
On page 3, 0602-18.
Well, my pages are different.
Oh, okay, okay.
Okay, let me see. Bear with me, I'm going to find it. We've got 06.
It's on referral.
Okay, good. All right, so we're going to transfer 0602-18 from.
Consent to drop, or just drop.
To consent.
Yeah, that's fine, to drop.
Okay.
Thank you.
We'll transfer that to consent. Any other items? There being none, the chair would welcome a motion and a second for approval of the amended agenda.
So, second.
Motion from Mr. Higginbotham, second from Mr. Gualphney. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And that is unanimous. Thank you very much. Okay, consent agenda. We would welcome a motion and a second for approval of said agenda.
So moved.
I'm sorry, who was first? Mr. Wolverton was first? I'm sorry. Mr. Higginbotham was first. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second for Ms. Andrews. Any further discussion about the consent agenda? There being none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And that is unanimous. All right. I'm going to try, hold on just a second. We're going to try not to jump around too much. Well, I'm not seeing. Okay, let's do this. Let's start from the top. All right. Old Business Agenda, 3111-17. This is a continuation of a public hearing from January 22nd, 2018, for consideration of condemning a house at the following address, 2516 Seventeenth Street South, requested by Wyatt Pugh. Are there any additional comments, Mr. Pugh?
I'm only here, I have a lot of comments.
Sir, one at a time, please.
Yeah. Excuse me. Having not seen any work visibly, I contacted Dimitri, and I apologize for not using your last name, about the work, and impressed upon him the fact that we need to get some progress going on this, and he assured me that there is progress going, and he wanted to come here and speak to you all about it. I've got some fairly recent pictures here, just to remind you of which house we're talking about.
Were these pictures taken since the last meeting we had?
Just after.
Just after, okay.
These look like the same pictures, but they were two or three days afterwards. I've been keeping up.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Pugh?
Mr. Pugh?
Yes.
What progress has been made since then?
None that I can see. That's the reason I contacted the owner, and he wanted to come here and tell you about it.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Of the work that's been done, I know they removed the roof system. It looks like they've raised with three runs of block on top, and maybe done some foundation work. Is your department satisfied with the work done so far? Do you feel like it's structurally sound?
Well, we've not conducted any inspections yet. The inspections have not been called for. It's not really reached that point yet where anything's ready to be covered up.
All right, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Sir?
Yes.
Yes, I need you to sign in over here again, always.
I would like to address that since the original meeting, which was done in November, according to the provision of section of this city, we removed every single nuisance or safety issue. There is no longer safety issue. This building is under reconstruction. I have documents that we removed 120 tons of debris from this place. So, under your guidance, the building is no longer unsafe, so I would ask to remove the consideration for demolishing the building. Plus, I do have the latest fixtures. A roof is going on. Just because we do not possess a large amount of money to rebuild.
They are not very professionally done. And you could see this.
So actually, we improved the building beyond the original stipulation that it's separate here, that is public nuisance or unsafe conditions. So at this moment, it's just a building under renovation, which we duly obtain the permit and duly fulfill all of the obligation that City of Homewood has placed upon us, just because we do not possess a large amount of pull. And I would love to, for City of Homewood, give me a loan, $3 million, a million dollars, but, you know, we're doing at a small pace, which I promised originally in November. I was standing here, and I said, "We do not have a large amount of money, but we will be fulfilling every single, you know, safety regulation that there is." And as you can see, we cleared a lot, we cleaned all of the trees, we removed a large amount of debris, and we're working on it. So I believe that at this moment, I would like to ask the city to no longer pursue demolition on this property.
Any questions? Mr. Wright?
I would just say, just understand when it comes to, we certainly all understand the financial challenges that we all face from time to time, but when it comes to an existing public safety.
Sir, like I said.
No, no, let me finish. I said, when it comes to an existing, you know, public danger, you know, time is critically important, and that was back in November, and here we are in February.
Correct.
I haven't looked at all the photos, and I'm, soon we'll discuss the improvements and the measures that you have taken, and that all appears to be steps in the right direction. The council can speak for how it wants to treat this, but just understand, when it comes to public danger, how critically important that is to our community and to people walking around your building, going in and out of the building, and the existing danger that was there for months on end.
Yes, sir, but remember, we were not the owners. The building was abandoned for seven years, and we became the owners in November. From November to December, we removed the roof and every single safety-related issue on that property. Right now, there is no safety. We removed even electricity. We put a temporary pole approved by the city and approved by Alabama Power. So we fulfilled every single.
And have you confirmed that with our city inspectorship?
Absolutely. They inspected the pole.
So our city inspectors have already communicated with you that all safety.
Mr. Pugh?
Problems have been met and accomplished?
As far as I know.
Well, and as far as you know, I just asked if y'all have had communication to work as part of this process, which we're trying to do, which we have to do to go through this process since November to ensure safety to our community.
I certainly can't say that every safety regulation has been addressed. We've not been called out to inspect anything beyond the setting of the power pole. And that's a temporary construction power pole. Alabama Power asks for us to release that, so once a permit is taken out for a temporary power pole, we send a release to Alabama Power saying that it's okay. They have taken out a proper permit for that.
Well, and that's why I asked the question. So before we can communicate to this council that all safety problems have been addressed, we have to communicate that through our city inspectors, okay? And that hasn't been done yet.
Yes, sir, it's been done. The main issue.
Well, I just, we just heard.
The main issue.
We just heard from the inspector who says he hasn't been done.
The main issue for demolition was the improper roof and the porch. They've been all demolished. There is no longer roof or the porch that place any kind of danger.
And I appreciate that. I appreciate, I'm not trying to, I'm just saying, it's a process. We have to communicate with the city inspectors, okay? That hasn't been done yet, let's get that done, you know, and before we can declare that we are free of danger problems.
But, so in other words, you're saying that any construction in the City of Homewood has to be demolished?
No.
No, no, I'm not.
No, no, no.
The original premise of this letter was that I would remove. Oh, can I explain, because I'm just confused.
Well, I'm going to help you with that, okay? This is a communication issue.
Yes, sir.
That's what it is. We rely on the folks that are duly assigned and employed by Homewood to let us know the condition of any project like this that is in flux, and I think that probably is a pretty accurate word for where we are right now. I'm hearing a disconnect between our engineering folks and yourself, and that's not good for you or anyone else who would be in a similar position. Now, any other questions, Ward One folks?
What was your name again?
Dimitri.
What was your last name?
Karabnikov.
You own multiple properties in Rosedale, correct?
Yes, I do.
Okay. So you bought the property knowing that you were going to have to put substantial money into it to get it, so I don't really, the excuse about capital, doesn't really hold water, because you knew what you were getting into when you bought it. Second, I would be okay with letting this go, once Mr. Pugh and BEZ has inspected it and said that all the concerns have been remediated. Until then, I think we should carry it over, or leave the public hearing open, sorry.
I understand, yes, yes. All right, so here's our plan. We will leave this public hearing open, that's our choice, but we're back to the communication. Mr. Pugh and his department has to tell us that what you or any other individual is saying is in fact the case due to an inspection and due to an evaluation, okay? Thank you. We'll leave it open, okay? All right. 0112-17, which is request to address Homewood Middle School traffic concerns, requested by Britt Thames. We'll start with a report from Public Safety, Mr. McCluskey.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Public Safety Committee met and voted five to zero to recommend dropping the speed limit to 20 miles per hour on Irving, Mayfair, and Highland, based on recommendations of Lieutenant Sutton with the Homewood Police Department. Motion was made by Counselor Wyatt and seconded by Counselor Andrews.
All right, thank you, sir. Mr. Kendrick, can we have the first reading?
Yes, sir. It's an ordinance to further regulate traffic in the City of Homewood and to provide for penalties for the violation thereof, be ordained by the City as follows. And every person, firm, or corporation operating in a motor vehicle as defined in the Code of Alabama shall not travel in excess of 20 miles per hour on a portion of the following streets. One, on the long Highland Road between the intersection of Highland Road with Gaineswood Road and Highland Road with Mecca Avenue. Two, on the long Irving Road between the intersection of Irving Road with Mecca Avenue and Irving Road with Dell. Three, on the long Manhattan Street between the intersection of Manhattan Street and Gaineswood Road and Manhattan Street and Dell Avenue. Four, on the long that portion of Mayfair between the intersection of Mayfair Drive with Highway 31, Independence Drive, and Mayfair Drive and Roxbury Road. Section two, all the ordinances contrary to the provisions are repealed. Section three, any part of provision ordinance declared to be unconstitutional or invalid by a court of competent jurisdiction, such holdings shall not affect the other parts of the ordinance. Section four, any person who violates the provisions of this ordinance, upon conviction, shall be punished as provided by section 1-8 of the Code of Ordinances. Section five, the chief of police shall erect or cause to be erected appropriate lines marking signs on portions of roads identified in section one above.
Thank you, Mr. Kendrick. Chair would welcome a motion and a second.
Second.
All right. Motion from Mr. Thames, second from Mr. Higginbotham. Mr. Gualphney, I'm sorry. Hearing, my fault. Roll call.
Mr. Gualphney?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Thames?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Wolverton?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. McCluskey?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Wyatt?
Yes.
Mrs. Andrews?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
And Mr. Limbaugh?
Yes. All right, so this will be ordinance 2686. Chair would welcome a motion and a second for adoption.
So moved.
Second.
Motion from Mr. Gualphney, second from Mr. Thames. Roll call.
Mr. Gualphney?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Thames?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Wolverton?
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Wyatt?
Yes.
Mrs. Andrews?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
And Mr. Limbaugh?
Yes. So 2686 has passed unanimously, and we'll move on to 0512-17. Review bid opening for Public Safety Center bid package, abatement and demolition, John Hanson, Berkeley Squires, report from the bid opening.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The Finance Committee met on February 5th and voted five to zero to recommend approval of Harvard's recommendation for the bid to be awarded to Tri-Star of America, the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, in the amount of $428,000. So five to zero coming out of Finance.
Okay, so we have the motion from Finance. Any further questions or discussion?
One question.
Yes.
This was budgeted, right?
Yes.
I think we discussed that in committee, okay. Thank you.
All right. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. Any opposed? That is Resolution 1813, and that is approved. 1412-17, request for consideration of professional services in gardens related to tree ordinance revisions, requested by Andy Gualphney, report from Special Issues. Ms. Andrews?
I'm so sorry, I was looking at the wrong thing. Okay, we carried that over. We met on January the 29th, and we carried that over.
Okay. Mr. Jones?
Okay. And we didn't carry it over, so we, we voted on it. All right. Okay, so you see what committee is working for you, okay?
And therefore you get the preferred spot for me.
I'm just saying that because Mrs. Smith didn't hear, otherwise she'd punch me in the arm. That's right. I took her microphone, and I'll hear from it next week.
I'm losing control.
I know. Okay, so we voted four to zero with one abstention. So we, four, zero, and then one abstention from Mr. Higginbotham to approve funding not to exceed $9,500 from, and we're taking that out of the Mature Tree Planting Fund, which is 0111-575-113. So that's where we are, and we can decide to move forward or not without Special Issues.
Well, we have a motion from Finance. Do you have a question, Mr. Gualphney?
I was pointing to record, I thought we dropped it in Special Issues.
Special Issues did, we dropped it.
For the minute's sake.
Okay, I have here that we carried it over, so.
It may have been dropped on the T5. If you look on the T5 minutes, it may have been dropped.
Oh, thank you. I'm sorry, I've got two sets in front of me. Let's go back.
I'm confused.
So am I. What was the number again?
1412-17.
1412-17. Oh, sure enough, I'm sorry. Okay, yes, I have two weeks sitting in front of me, and I apologize. The Special Issues Committee met and voted five to zero, dropping this item, and this was on February 5th. The motion was made by Counselor Higginbotham and seconded by myself.
And, Mr. Law, we didn't put it on consent, because one dropped and one had a motion, so we didn't put it on consent. We left it here for Finance to be able to report out. That's why it was not on consent.
So, point of order, Mr. Kendrick, do I?
You adopt the resolution, not authorize the signature.
Well, we've got a motion from Finance to adopt the resolution, so.
The mayor has to be authorized to sign.
Right. So all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There we go. That's Resolution 1814, and it is passed.
I was going to say, Mr. President, this makes me feel better about the powerful nature of Finance Committee and what it does, so.
So are you saying I should continue to give?
No, I'm glad the Special Issues was dropped, so I'm kidding.
I understand. All right. 0601-18, public hearing set for tonight, for consideration of a variance to the sign ordinance at 1831 28th Street South, requested by Candace Watson, Greg Cobb, our BEZ Department report from Special Issues. Ms. Andrews?
Okay, this is 0601-18. The Special Issues Committee met on January 29th and voted five to zero to recommend sending back to full council without recommendation pending the public hearing. The motion was made by myself and seconded by Counselor McCluskey.
All right, thank you. We will open this public hearing. Go for it, Mr. Cobb.
This is a request for a second attached sign. It's not oversized, it's just, wait a minute, that one is. Secondary sign.
Attached.
Attached to the building on the corner of Soho North, and you are, sir.
I'm Fletcher Flynn, I'm the Operations Manager with Ashen Maxx.
Okay. Talk to us.
Yeah, we would just like to ask for y'all to consider a variance to the sign. Basically, we've got this oval sign, the oval's kind of consistent with our branding.
It is oversized.
Was it?
I said, yes, it is oversized.
It is oversized. So anyways, we'd just like to ask for consideration. We're excited to get open up in Homewood. We're shooting for a week, week and a half, and just like to see if y'all grant a variance on that, so.
All right, any questions, council?
Can I ask a quick one?
Sure, go.
I'm pointing to clerk, maybe I misheard. So is this for a second sign, or?
No, I misspoke.
Okay.
I got too many things going on, signs tonight, but this is one sign that's oversized, is what it is.
Because of the shape.
Yes, sir.
I got you. Thank you.
All right, good. Any other questions? Thank you both very much. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to this matter? There being no one, we will close the public hearing and welcome a motion from council.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion for Ms. Andrews, second from Mr. Wright. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And that is Resolution 1815, and that passed unanimously, so thank you. And welcome, by the way. Good to have you. All right. 0701-18, public hearing set for tonight, for consideration of a variance to a sign ordinance at 209 Lakeshore Parkway, requested by Carrie Little, Greg Cobb, our BEZ Department. Back to a report from Special Issues.[1671.87]
The motion was made by Councilor Waltney and seconded by myself.
All right, thank you. We will open the public hearing. Mr. Cobb, we'll begin with you.
Yes, sir, this is Walmart, and they're replacing all their signs and adding two more, one that says pickup and one that says pharmacy. So, it's multiple sign variances, and also, of course, their signs are, their Walmart signs definitely oversized. We had a sign package we packaged out last week that had them all on it, and there's... Yeah, okay. So, it's a request for multiple signs and oversized signs.
Right.
And on their big pylon sign, they're just refacing it, so that doesn't require any action by us, and I believe that sign will be moving when the construction is done on the Divergent Diamond.
Well, I've seen the orange signs on other Walmarts, the one in Alexander City certainly, and have utilized that, so it's a...
The orange is actually the paint.
Right.
The sign is actually kind of a white, off-white, so make sure that's clear. The signs that we'll be doing, it's a remodel for your Walmart here, and the Walmart and the Spar are definitely, they're just interchanging them, just changing them out. Then, sign two on your list is Home and Pharmacy, that's actually just a change-out, sign for sign. Sign three is your pickup, and that was eliminated, that's the new sign, that's gonna be where your orange stripe is on the wall, and it's actually sixty-six point seven six square feet. Sign four is grocery, that's a change-out from Market, they're changing the logo from Market to logo. It is a small, I think it's fifteen point something square feet larger, not much, that's going there. Sign five is actually the new sign, that's Vision Center, it is very small, it's eight point eight one, I hope they have good eyes when they're coming in or they're doing the vision done, because it is very small. Sign six is a replacement sign, sign for sign, lawn and garden. Let's see, sign seven, the signs are down now, that's your single pole pipeline, it's just face replacements, sign for sign. And then, sign eight is the double pole that eventually will be moved when the new construction, I think it's entry-exit area.
Yes, ma'am.
Will be moved, but we're gonna go ahead and do face replacement on it, so it's all consecutive and looks nice for y'all. And all new total square footage is seventy-five point five seven, with the largest of it being your new pickup sign at sixty-six point seven six square feet.
Great, thank you. Any other questions? Counsel?
I would just like to extend our appreciation to your client for what they do for our city, and these signs do look all within reasonable taste and size and such and color, so, thank you, and hope you let your client know that. Thank you.
Thank you, we do appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Anyone else here that would like to address this issue? If there is not, we will close this public hearing. Chair would welcome a motion and a second for approval.
Moved to approve.
Motion from Mr. McCleskey, second from Mr. Wright. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, that's...
Mr. President, I need to abstain.
Okay, that's fine. So, that would be two, three, four, five, six...
Mr. Higginbotham?
I got that, it was eight zero one.
So, it's eight zero one, yes. Okay, and that's eighteen sixteen. All right, thank you. Fourteen oh-one-eighteen, request for consideration of lighting for the five-hundred block of Windsor Drive, requested by Arpan Patel and Jennifer Andrews, report from Public Safety, Mr. McCleskey.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Public Safety Committee met and voted five to zero to recommend approval and referral to the Finance Committee for funding. Motion was made by Councilor Andrews and seconded by Councilor Thames.
Okay, so we can approve this without the financing approved?
No, 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 referral to finance.
Yeah, the seven eighth is wrong, it was just referred to finance.
Okay, so we will refer this to finance. Okay, good, thank you.
Just recommending...
Is that okay, Mr. Jones?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Fifteen oh-one-eighteen, request for consideration to allow closure of the section of Oak Grove Road adjacent to Patriot Park on June second, twenty-eighteen, for the Patriot Park Street Fest, and on August twenty-fifth, twenty-eighteen, for the Back to School Bash sponsored by Homewood Parks and Recreation, requested by Justin Limbaugh and Mike Higginbotham, report from Public Safety, Mr. McCleskey.
Yes, the Public Safety Committee met and voted five to zero to recommend the approval of the closures. The motion was made by Councilor Thames, seconded by Councilor Wyatt.
All right, we have a motion from Public Safety, do we have any other discussion? There being none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? And that is eighteen seventeen. Okay, nineteen oh-one-eighteen, public hearing set for February twenty-sixth at six P.M. for consideration of condemning a house at the following address, twenty-five thirty-one Eighteenth Place South, requested by Wyatt Pugh, and this will be carried over for a public hearing. Twenty oh-one-eighteen, public hearing set for tonight at six P.M. for consideration of a sign variance at thirty-five West Lakeshore, requested by Mark Williams, Greg Cobb, our BEZ Department, report from special issues, Ms. Andrews.
The committee met on February fifth and voted five to zero to send us back out to the full council without recommendation pending the public hearing. The motion was made by myself and seconded by Councilor Waltney.
All right, thank you. We will open this public hearing, and Mr. Cobb?
This is a request for a secondary attached sign, and I believe there's a picture of what's existing right there, and that's where the other one would be, correct?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you, sir, and you are?
I'm Terry Black, I'm the practice administrator for the medical group that has moved into this building. If you come past the building, it's very oddly shaped on the property, if you come past the front of the building from the interstate, you can clearly see nephrologists associated. If you're coming from Columbiana Green Springs or from Sanford on Lakeshore, you're past the building before you can ever see it. So, what we're requesting is the new sign on the side from Columbiana and Green Springs, and it's our logo, it's a flat, it's not flashing, no bells, and our patients are passing us, and they're at the interstate before they know we're there, so we're just requesting the additional sign.
Understood. Is that a lighted sign?
No.
Okay, all right. Any other questions, counsel?
Is there a monument sign or anything like that on Lakeshore?
There is a small sign that I would not, I mean, I don't know in your world if you consider it a monument sign, but it's very small and it's on the service road. You might see it. I don't know, I've never, if you're coming from that way, the MedHelp sign, the big lighted flashing sign, probably would obstruct the monument sign sometimes. I don't think it's tall enough for you to be able to see it very far. Do you know the...
I didn't even notice it.
Yeah.
When I went out and made the picture I made.
Any other questions? All right, thank you very much, I appreciate it. Anyone else who would like to speak to this matter? If there is not, we will close the public hearing. Chair would welcome a motion and a second for approval. Uh-oh.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Motion from Ms. Andrews, second from Mr. Waltney. Any further discussion? If there is not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed?
No.
Okay, so we have a nine-one approval, and this will be resolution eighteen eighteen, and that twenty oh-one-eighteen is handled. Next item is committee referral agenda, chair would welcome a motion for approval.
So moved.
Motion from Mr. Waltney, second from Mr. McCleskey. Any discussion? If there is none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and that is approved. All right, we move on to other new business. Oh-four-oh-two-eighteen, request to set a public hearing for consideration of zoning application of the city of Homewood to rezone seventeen hundred and seventeen oh-eight Twenty-Ninth Court South, from C-one Office Building District to C-four Central Business District to I-two Institutional District, zoning classifications for purpose of rezoning two parcels in order to have consistent zoning on multiple properties allowing for future use. By the way, this is a request that was considered by the Homewood Planning Commission on its meeting of February eighth, twenty-eighteen, resulting in a favorable recommendation by a vote of six-zero, requested by Vanessa McGrath in our BEZ Department. Public hearing will be set for March twelfth, twenty-eighteen at six P.M. All right, fifteen oh-two-eighteen, request for consideration to set a public hearing for a variance to the sign ordinance at ten forty-five Broadway Park, requested by Candace Watson, Greg Cobb, our BEZ Department. Can we have that in two weeks, Mr. Kendrick?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we will set that for February the twenty-sixth, twenty-eighteen, at six P.M. Sixteen oh-two-eighteen, request for consideration to set a public hearing for a fence variance at eighteen-ten Twenty-Fifth Court South to allow fifteen feet of netting on top of a five-foot...
I'm sorry, Mr. Limbaugh, I'm sorry for saying, can we back back up? That one is getting sent to committee. It is getting sent to committee, but I don't know when committee's gonna meet because of President's Day, so should we still have it on the twenty-sixth?
Well, okay...
The one before that, fifteen oh-two-eighteen, is being sent to committee.
And a public hearing, so do you need...
Okay, so we need fifteen oh-two-eighteen to be sent to...
It is on the, it is on the...
It's gonna be seven days, so I didn't think the committee would meet the next week.
Yeah, it is on this committee referral, but the twenty-sixth is gonna be too soon, because they're not gonna even have an action taken on it till...
Okay, so we can't set that public hearing yet.
The council could set it if they'd like to, but I understood it's going to the committee, so if the committee goes, it can't be set for the next meeting, so...
It just needs to be, we usually put them on here, but y'all just need to set it further out to the meeting in March or something.
Let's set it further out, let's set it for March the twelfth. Yes, there we go. All right, good. Set for March twelfth. Sixteen oh-two-eighteen, do we need to also set that one for March twelfth?
Yes, sir.
And that is set. Okay, we'll move on to seventeen oh-two-eighteen, request to set a public hearing for a variance to sign ordinance at two-thirty-four Green Springs Highway, requested by Park Grimmer, Greg Cobb, our BEZ Department, being referred to special issues, and we will set this one for March twelfth. There we go. Okay, eighteen oh-two, request for consideration of approval of vouchers for the period of January twenty-ninth, twenty-eighteen through February eleventh, twenty-eighteen, requested by our city treasurer. Report from Finance, Mr. Thames.
Yes, sir, I reviewed the invoices and would move that we approve and pay.
Good. We have a motion from Mr. Thames, do we have a second?
Right.
Second from Mr. McCleskey. Any other questions? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that is eighteen nineteen. All right, last item is nineteen oh-two-eighteen, request to authorize the mayor to sign a maintenance contract for outdoor warning siren system, requested by Melanie Salter, our Finance Director. Is there a need for an explanation here, Ms. Salter?
I'm just like, it's budgeted. It is budgeted, and it's just our portion of the sirens that, for maintenance, and Jim Coker, who's over the MA, had sent this out to us, so something we had expected, anticipated, it is budgeted, but to enter into the agreement, Mr. Kendrick's recommended that y'all authorize me to sign that.
Okay, good. All right, do we have a motion and a second?
What?
For approval?
So moved.
Motion from Mr. Thames, second from Mr. McCleskey. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is resolution eighteen twenty, and it passes unanimously, and that is our agenda, folks, and we'll move on to comments from the mayor, sir.
Good, thank y'all.
Great. Before we get into council comments, next Monday night is President's Day, City Hall is closed, so, I know...
The president?
Huh?
Oh, no. The president?
Thank you.
The president and Limbaugh.
Yeah, Limbaugh Towerhead is not closed, let me just say that.
Sure that.
What's the council's choice here? Since we're gonna observe President's Day.
We just got back on special...
No, I'll be happy, I'd be happy to come in on President's Day to take minutes if you, if y'all have them, I can't speak for any of the departments.
I mean, we got a choice here of Tuesday night, or... Huh? I understand.
I think we can keep moving, let's do Tuesday.
I'm sorry, Ms. Andrews, I couldn't hear you.
We just keep moving, let's just keep moving forward, let's do the Tuesday.
So, your choice, your choice would be Tuesday, and Ward one would be okay, it's a problem for Andrew. Yeah. Okay.
What came to Andrew?
I know, I hate for it to be a problem for anybody, I do. Let's start with Finance will be at five o'clock, will that be okay?
Yes, sir.
A week from tomorrow night.
Yes, sir.
It's on two-twenty?
Yes.
Okay.
My understanding is that schools, public safety, and parks still have items that need to be approved, that's why we, that's why we've awarded Finance this coveted position. All right, Mr. Waltney?
I just wanted to take a quick second and thank Mike for coming out to the Rosedale Springdale Park revitalization meeting, Brett as well, obviously, it's a given, right? But it was a really good meeting, just to give some feedback, we had really good input from the community, super positive stuff, you probably read Sidney's article about it as well, but it's a good step in the right direction for that neighborhood, and that's gonna be an awesome park, so hopefully have some land being moved in April timeframe and have a new park pretty soon. Second, in the Rosedale vein, thank you all for your support as we work through these homes over there, we appreciate that, and it's making a big difference already in the neighborhood, and we're getting the feedback from the neighbors as well for the attention we're providing, so, thank you all.
Good, thank you. Mr. Thames?
Obviously echo what Andy said, and also, let's keep David Primus in our thoughts and prayers, he lost his father this weekend, he runs the Lee Center for us, he also does a great job with our camps at Park and Rec, and of course, his wife, Vonda, helps keeps the wheels turning in Finance. So, I think he passed on Saturday, so let's just kinda keep him close to our hearts. Also, five-thirty, Walter, are you going five-thirty?
Yes.
Okay, P and D at five-thirty. Thank you.
I keep saying one of these days I'm gonna start on Ward five, see him, Mr. Wright.
I like what I said.
But not tonight. All right. Mr. Higginbotham?
Thank you, Mr. President. Have a town hall meeting on Thursday, but I'm gonna let Andrew talk about that. Only thing I wanted to say was, I know that I speak for almost everyone in West Homewood that we're extraordinarily excited about the opening of Pizzeria GM, I'm hoping everyone on this desk has had an op, and below it, and in the audience, and everywhere, and at home, who's looking at this video, have had an opportunity to go over and sample the food there, it is fantastic, just incredible food, I understand from all indications that they've just had enormous crowds already, so it has been welcomed with open arms by our community, and from what I've heard of, from other communities too, a number of people have spoken with their, people around them and found they were from other cities. The only observation I'd make is, we may become somewhat victims of our own success, and we may need to start talking about phase two and phase three of the West Homewood Development Plan, but we'll save that for another day, because we may need more parking over there to deal with Pizzeria GM, but I hope all of you take advantage of it, it's a fantastic restaurant, thanks.
Great, thank you. Mr. Wolverton?
Just to carry on that comment, I wholeheartedly agree. One thing that I'm also excited about is just the businesses over there working together. I know that Ash is looking to come in the next several months, but Magic City Sweet Ice is kinda partnering with, with both of those restaurants in the future to kind of continue in the, you know, prosperity for all, for all three of them. So, Thursday night, we are meeting at Raleigh Avenue Baptist Church at six-thirty, just having a town hall meeting that evening to kind of give updates for anything that's kind of going on in the last few months, and we are having a group share some ideas about some sort of trail system over at West Homewood Park and kind of what their thoughts are. Our understanding is that they're talking with Berkeley and Parks directly as well, but they're gonna kinda share something that evening as well. That's, that's it.
Thank you. Mr. McCleskey?
Yes, Mr. Thames, I'll, if you'll need, I already did, so we will do Public Safety at six o'clock, and Mr. Waltney, I would not be there. I think, so if you want to carry it for me, the only item is yours. I would expect you to do that in two minutes. Absolutely, so, wow.
Wow, but it has to be five-minute increments, that's kind of a rule.
Two minutes, we might even be able to, could do under two minutes. Yeah, there you go, so, that's it.
Thank you. Mr. Jones?
Just a quick question on the, on the new Gianmarco location, is there, we need to look at signage for parking, I don't think there's any signage for where the parking
I don't think there's any signage for where the parking lot is, I don't know if we need to think about that, because that, that would really help with people trying to find parking. But anyway, thank you, Mr. President, for putting together the sidewalk meeting, I think that's helpful, because we really need to move on some of the items that are, they're easy to, to execute on, and we've just kind of been carrying it over.
We have.
So I'm glad that we're, we're, we're looking at, you know, additional funding and finalizing that, so thank you for putting that together.
You're welcome. It's not gonna get any less expensive, so we need, we need to move forth.
Good point.
Mr. Wyatt? How about five minutes?
Five minutes. We can do five minutes.
Thank you.
To 6:05. The only other thing I have is, I wanted to thank everyone that, on the council and Mr. Mayor and Mr. Bischoff who came down to Montgomery, I guess it was the week before last now, for the hearing on the lid bill exemption bill. We had most of the council there, there were a few people who couldn't make it, because they had other obligations, but it was really a, a large group, and the show of support was well received, and the committee really spoke highly of the bill. Hopefully, it is gonna be taken up on the floor this week. There's still an obstacle to overcome, but we're, we're thinking positively, and hopefully it'll be taken up this week, and we'll be able to move on to the next step in the Senate, where I expect it will go through very quickly. But I appreciate everyone's support and willingness to, you know, take the day to go down there, and it was, it was an important step, and I think it, it will yield good results in the end.
Thank you. Ms. Andrews?
I will go ahead and set this for Barry, I know she's got a few issues that need to be set for public hearing, as well as, I know she's got something for Mike on here as well, do you think 25 minutes, if you're going for five?
Yeah.
Go to 6:05 to 6:30. And then I also wanted to congratulate Will Stone, he was named as Alabama's Cross Country Gatorade Player of the Year, that's his second year in a row to receive that award, and I also wanted to congratulate Coach Tom Esslinger from the high school, he was named the National Federation of State High School Association's Alabama Coach of the Year, and he is now up for the country award, so, for the Coach of the Year for the entire country, so I wanna say congratulations to them too.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Wright?
I'm not sure if you already said it, but that's because our high school boys and high school girls just destroyed the competition in the state tournament, in the state meet, I should say, and just ran away with both of those. That was indoor, for the indoor, and so that's two more state championships for wonderful high school. Okay, so I'll do 6:30 for Public Works, it should not last very long at all. Couple things, picking up comments, I don't know if we've met before, maybe I may have missed a meeting, but I did wanna mention how exciting I am about GM Pizzeria opening up as well, I think it's, it's everything this council wants that restaurant to be, you know, it's a magnet for that community that's so needed, and it's just, it really is on fire over there, and it's, and that's, that's really the, one of the key, key parts of that whole project. Also, just mentioned, also had the opportunity to do the soft opening with many of you all for the Big Bad Breakfast, which is closer over to my part of town, and, and that was pretty neat too, and happy to welcome them, that's a, a good name brand coming into the city. Also, I wanted to pick up on Alex's comments and just elaborate, and have a special thanks to Representative Faulkner and also Representative Rogers, both of who are sponsoring our legislation on the lid bill, and have expressed support for the lid bill, so I'm looking forward to those two working with the legislature to try and get this through the legislature and hopefully off to the Senate. So I wanted to thank Representative Rogers and Representative Faulkner, our two representatives for Homewood, and what they're doing for us. And with that, I think that's all I have, thank you so much.
Thank you.
President Limbaugh, can I ask a question? I've gotten confused on the, on the meeting somewhere with the five minutes or two minutes, this confused me. We have Finance at 5:00, we have P and D at 5:30, we have Public Safety at 6:00?
Special Issues at 6:05.
Okay, 'cause I heard 6:25.
There we go, no problem.
So Special Issues at 6:05, and then I have Public Works at 6:30?
That's it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Limbaugh, and I followed your recommendation and went to Big Bad Breakfast, and it was truly excellent. It got her seal of approval, so it really doesn't matter what I thought, but with that, we will stand. All right, here's the thing that was...